Okay, the board is now back in session and we're back returning to our agenda. I do not have any items to add for good cause. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
No, Madam Chair.
Board members, do you have any items to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll now take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Ms. Savietto. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any disclosures and abstentions? Okay, seeing none. We don't have any speakers. That's going to bring us to approving the consent agenda. I'll take a motion. Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Mr. Lane. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We don't have any new business, so I'll now take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Vice Chair Lane. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board members, that's going to bring us over to our workshops, so just give everybody a minute. Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I will now call the workshop to order at 2:51 PM. Mrs. Sinclair, please call the roll.
District one, Matthew Lane.
Here.
District two, Virginia Savietto.
Here.
District three, Karen Brill.
Here.
District four, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District five, Gloria Branch.
Here.
And district six, Marsha Andrews.
Here.
And district seven, Mr. Ferguson is not in attendance.
Also joining us for tonight's meetings are Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, and Board Clerk Tony Sinclair. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. In the event that the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the district website within 24 hours. I'll now turn the workshop over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as the board well knows, we're in a difficult budget situation. The budget that was approved by the state for the current school year FY '26 was pretty lean, and then we had the unexpected and unwelcome surprise for the significant drop of enrollment of roughly 6,000 students. So we've got some work to do to balance this year's budget. And then as we look ahead to FY '27, next year, there's not a lot of room for optimism at this point. I know many of us were in Tampa last week for the FSBA and the FADS Conference, and the intelligence I'm receiving is to be prepared for another lean budget as the state continues their quest to reduce spending. But it's early in the process, and knowing that we've got some tough financial times ahead, I would just say there's no other person I'd want to have in the CFO seat than Ms. Heather Frederick. She's an expert in her field. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Frederick for the workshop.
Great, thank you, and good afternoon, board members. I wanted to mention, I usually don't wear any color. I usually wear white and black and maybe throw in some gray, and I'm wearing red, which was truly intended to be some holiday cheer and to bring some jolly to this, but realized that there could be some different connotations to my color. But that was my ultimate intention because this is a pretty negative budget outlook. And today, we actually received some information, you know, hot off the press, that the governor released not his full budget, but he provided an overview of his budget recommendation. So I'm going to be able to highlight that as well, which is not in our slides. We're going to start with looking at the state economic outlook, which is quite oblique when you look into the out years, give an update on FY '26 and where we stand, and then what that's doing and what we're going to have to face going into FY '27, and just an overall timeline of what this budget development process will look like for FY '27. And looking at the statewide economic outlook, when we look at FY '27, the state has been able, based on the legislative changes that were made this past cycle, to turn FY '27 into a projected surplus based on the changes they made. But the outlook in '28 and '29 are a pretty significant budget shortfall. And the presentation that was made by Amy Baker, who is from the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, the state economist, she is reinforcing to the legislature that they need to align their expenses with the revenue that they're receiving. And so really forcing the legislature to take a hard look, be lean like they were in this current year, because they were able to turn a budget shortfall in '27 into a surplus, that they're going to have to continue to make some tough changes and decisions going into this legislative cycle so that they can balance those out years. When you look at our statewide economy and where we stand, you know, personal income is strong. We're 11th in the US. We all know that housing has started to slow, you know, the home sales are starting to slow, the number of permits being requested are starting to decline. So that market is really starting to stabilize. Our population in Florida is going to continue to grow, but what's interesting when you look at the chart in the lower left-hand side, which I know is a little small, but if you look at that top bar, that top bar that is declining in growth, and this is a historical look back from 2000 to 2030, that's the workforce. Those are the individuals, the population, percentage of the population in Florida, that is the workforce age. The other, the green bar there, are school-age students, and that the percentage of the population of school-age students has become a smaller percentage of the total population, although it's going to continue to grow, just growing at a much lesser rate. And that red bar that is going up and increasing pretty significantly is the population age 65-plus. So it's that silver tsunami, and the larger the population, you know, that population also has, is going to add additional costs to the state because there is a greater cost the older you get that is going to put a bigger burden on the state budget. When you look at our GDP for the state of Florida, we rank fourth in the country, just behind California, Texas, and New York. And when you look at our GDP, this is a chart that you've seen before, and we've overlaid in the percent of education funding as a percentage of GDP. That's that yellow, not yellow, the red squiggly line across the top. Overlay that across the, on the same graph you've seen in the past, where it shows the amount of per-student funding that we have in the state of Florida. So when you look at our per-student funding, you know that we rank 46th in the country in terms of per-student funding. And then we wanted to overlay the, like I said, the percentage of education, or the amount of education spent as a percentage of GDP. And state of Florida, when you compare us to the largest states, which I mentioned, California, Texas, and New York, we continue to rank in the bottom, also in our spend compared, investment in education compared to our GDP. So we're at 48th compared to California, that's at 39th, Texas is at 31, and New York is at 10th. So we're not investing in per-student, and we're also not investing, when you look at it, as a percentage of our GDP. The state of Florida is prioritizing reserves, and I feel like that's very important to mention because they are facing a lot of uncertainty when you look at those significant potential budget deficits that they're facing in those out years. And so approximately, they have right now a $15 billion set aside in reserves, and that represents about 30% of their general revenue. When you look at FEFP and what are the main drivers of the state budget, FEFP is normally one of, is normally the top driver. It's always between Health and Human Services and FEFP. This year, there is a new top driver, and that's related to the Emergency Preparedness and Response Fund. The reason why this is a new driver is because of a lot of the natural disasters we've been having in the state of Florida. There have been transfers into this emergency fund over the past several years. It was not previously budgeted, but since it has been a consistent transfer over the past several years, Amy Baker, as the state economist, felt like it was important to include that in the state forecast because those natural disasters are most likely not going to be going away, and felt like it was important that that is going to end up being a significant expense potentially to the state, and it was necessary to include that in the state forecast, which hadn't been included previously. So that is the top driver. We then have the Medicaid program is number two, and that is mainly driven by the increase in cost of care. The changes at the federal policy level really wasn't brought into the discussion. It was primarily due to the cost, rising cost of care. And FEFP dropped to number three. We move on to the next slide. We'll be able to see the difference in the change in the critical need and driver from the prior-year forecast to this forecast. But FEFP is still one of those top drivers, and that driver and the need is based on making an adjustment in the enrollment from the prior-year forecast. There is a decrease in that enrollment estimate, which is why it dropped from one of the, from the top driver to the third driver. It includes maintaining the RLE as an assumption for the next three years, and annual increases of 3% per-student funding increases. And we know this, last year, the increase in per-student funding was 1.3%. So although that 3% is truly needed, I do feel like it's unlikely. That is something that will end up getting approved at the legislative level, knowing that they're facing two years of pretty significant budget shortfalls. This chart just goes to show the comparison between the prior-year outlook, which is in blue, which is the blue bar, compared to the current-year outlook, which is orange. And you can see pre-K-12 education is the second item on the list, and the critical need has dropped over $1 billion, and that is primarily because of a reduction in the projected enrollment growth. So from the prior-year forecast to the current forecast, the growth of enrollment dropped from 138,000 over a three-year period to a growth of 83,000 students. And we saw that impact and decline in enrollment was not only in Palm Beach County, but was truly statewide. And then you could see the statewide issues. That is the one that increased, the driver that increased significant from the prior-year outlook, and that's related to that change with that Emergency Preparedness Response Fund. So now, jumping into the Florida Department of Ed legislative budget request, which used to be the high-water mark, you know, many years ago, they're looking at it, made a proposed increase of $195 per student or 2.14%, which is more in line with where I anticipate we'll end up being. Probably, we'll be fortunate to get the 1% that we got this year. The projected student growth is important to highlight. There is projected student growth of 18,000 students statewide, but that's an increase of 46,000 voucher students and a decrease of 27,000 students within district-operated schools for a net increase statewide of 18,600. So that's showing that the bulk of the growth is, or all the growth, is really targeted towards vouchers. In looking at enrollment, enrollment is what truly drives our budget. Enrollment is not only uncertain statewide, it is uncertain in Palm Beach County because we did have that really truly unexpected decline of 6,000 students in Palm Beach County. When you say, well, what is the, what is unusual, I would say, in the state of Florida is our revenue for a school district is adjusted in the year of the enrollment decline. And most other states, they are given a one-year hold harmless in order to deal with that revenue reduction. And so that's why we do make adjustments within our staffing based on the enrollment on the 11th day of school. So when you're looking at a loss of 6,000 students, that equates to a loss of revenue of approximately $50 million. Once we adjusted staffing based on enrollment, we were able to save about $20 million, which left a $30 million shortfall. And then on top of that, our FY '25 revenue adjustment was not received until November 5th. That has never happened since I've been at the district, that we've had such a delay in knowing what our actual revenue was for the prior fiscal year. And we had an additional $10 million adjustment related to that FY '25 true-up, primarily related to DOE finally working through the confusion with vouchers. So what, when we're looking into not only, you know, FY '26, but FY '27, is really looking to make sure that we can project, in a really uncertain time, of what enrollment is going to look like for FY '27. When you look at, like I mentioned, we always adjust our staffing at the school sites based on the 11th day of school, but we're truly funded based on enrollment in October. And so we're always looking to do a forecast from the 11th day of school to October, and there's always a growth. The only year, there is one year missing in there, which is FY '21, and that was during the pandemic, and that was one year where we did not adjust as of the 11th day of school. We waited until that October survey period because enrollment was so uncertain. So that's why that one year is left out. The only other year that we had a decline between the 11th day of school and October was during that pandemic, so FY '22. Every other year, we've always had an increase, except for this year where we dropped an additional nearly 600 students, which was also unexpected. So since we're facing, you know, some financial challenges, we wanted to look at our financial condition ratio, which is how the Florida Department of Ed monitors school districts to determine their, the amount of reserves set aside. And when you look at the chart, you can see Palm Beach is in the orange, so it's kind of there in the middle. And there was a slight increase in the years of 2011 and 2012, and that was, it started to decline in '13. That was during ERA, and when we received the federal infusion of those ERA funds. ERA lasted about two years, and so that was the intention, was, you can see with most districts, was to build up fund balance and then slowly spend it down. As you continue with the line and following our orange line, you can see that it started in uptick again, FY '21, '22, '23, and that's a result of the ESAR funds that we received. The difference between the ERA funds and the ESAR funds is that the ESAR funds were for, there was more of it, and it was for a longer period of time. So instead of a two-year period, we had those funds over a four-year period. So you will see that our fund balance is going to tick up, but it's going to be the same. Where it's going to start, we'll start spending that down slowly, but we have to make sure we're spending that down on non-recurring type initiatives so that we don't get ourselves into a structurally imbalanced budget. I did want to highlight that top, like bluish turquoise line, that's Orange County Schools. They have one of the highest fund balance and financial condition ratios. They have the same millage rate that we do, but they spend theirs a little bit differently, so they have much more set aside within their reserve. And then I wanted to also highlight the purple, the purple line that you see there, that's Hillsborough County Schools, and they at one point did have the highest reserve. They are starting to tick up again, but they became and dropped down to the lowest. It's just important for the board to see that when you start spending recurring funds, I mean, non-recurring funds on recurring initiatives, how quickly it dissipates, you know, because it's one time. It's like your savings account, and if you're not replenishing your savings account, you're going to keep spending it down, and you're going to have nothing there. So right now, we're about in the middle, and when you look at the state average, the state average is at 12.8%. We're slightly above that at 13.3%. We need to make sure that we stay well above the 3% minimum that's set by the state. That 3% minimum is when they would potentially come in and qualify us as a state of financial When you think about our fund balance, $450 million seems like a significant amount of money, and it is. But that fund balance is set aside for specific purposes. So when we look at, tried to break it out in some categories to just create some context around that bucket of money that we have. $71 million is set aside for non-spendable items and state mandates. So non-spendable items are things that we've already paid for, like fuel inventory, textbooks. So we're just going to expense that out once we start using it, but we've already spent the money. And then the other portion is state mandates. So the Florida Department of Ed, the legislature, they dictate a lot about how our funds are spent. So if there's any carryover funds, we have to set it aside for that specific purpose. So that's about $71 million, so that $450 million. We have another $130 million set aside for specific purposes, reading, SAI, instructional materials. A lot of the items that previously were restricted categoricals, that DOE embedded and just collapsed into the base student allocation, are set aside within this category, as well as additional revenue from after-school programs and fee-based programs, including VPK. The next category is board contingency. So the board has a policy of setting aside 3% of appropriations in what's categorized as a board contingency, which also aligns with the state statute requirement of having a 3% minimum of general revenues. And that equates to $91 million. This is based on FY '25 final information. And like I said, that 3% is truly a minimum before potentially the Florida Department of Ed could come in and declare a financial emergency if we were to drop below that. And the last part is set aside for next year's budget appropriations. That totals $160 million. But to put that into context, one payroll is $80 million, and so that $160 million is enough to just pay one month of payroll. When you look at our general fund budget for FY '26, it's a total of $3.2 billion. The largest portion is in schools. 77% of it, that is in schools, and that includes vouchers as well as charter schools. When you look at departments and that 7% piece of the pie, nearly 40% of that is comprised of transportation and maintenance. So really, when you're thinking of all those other departments, that's really only 3% of the, or 4% of the total budget. So what are our next steps going into FY '27 when we're facing a $40 million shortfall? We are really focusing on enrollment, since enrollment is what truly drives our budget. Monitoring, we do anticipate we will have an additional decline in enrollment in FY '27 because of the shifting demographics, and we do not anticipate a change in federal policy related to immigration. So we are taking a very strategic approach in analyzing each of our departments. We have started the process earlier than we have started in previous years. Our department heads are going through each of their departments, and instead of taking a targeted approach, it's more strategically aligned with our strategic initiatives and trying to minimize the impacts to schools. You know, how can we reduce redundancies? How can we leverage more off of AI? So we're taking all of those considerations within those department reviews, and those will conclude in March, where we will be having a meetings, face-to-face meetings with myself as well as the superintendent. We are then working on aligning our staffing at the schools with enrollment, but we've convened a committee of principals, and so we're already working through changes that we'll be making to the allocation model. And now, those changes will be finalized in December, January timeframe. You know, so our goal is to close that gap of the $40 million shortfall. That is not setting aside any additional funds for raises. That's purely going to be dependent on what happens at the legislative level with the increase in per-student funding. And we'll also have to continue to monitor the impact of federal funds, and we won't know until the spring whether there's the potential of having any of the federal grants cut. We will be building this budget until we hear anything differently, including all the same federal funds that we've received this current year. I did want to give an update on the governor's proposal. So the governor's proposal is just, it's very vague at this point. We don't have the detail, but he's proposing to increase total education funding by $1 billion, which would be equivalent to approximately a 3% increase in per-student funding. He's also recommending increasing the TSIA, which is the teacher raise portion, by $200 million, which is double the amount that was in the budget for this year. So that would be equivalent to about a 1% increase for teachers. So I do anticipate that that truly is on the high level, looking at the negative financial outlook that the state is facing in '28 and '29. That is what was recommended, or not recommended, but was the average that was included in that state forecast, which included the budget shortfalls in '28 and '29. I have, I don't have to walk through this in detail, but this is the budget timeline, final budget adoption. The legislative, should, do need to highlight the legislative session. Since this is an even year, the legislative session is starting in January, so we're starting, the start of the legislative session is January 13th. That is due to end on March 13th, if it ends on time. We'll be working with your Budget Advisory Committee. We'll start our first meeting. After this meeting today, I'll be sending out a link to this workshop, as well as the meeting dates for the upcoming year. And we'll also be having budget workshops throughout this, the next several months. Tentative adoption is scheduled for July 29th, and final adoption is scheduled for September And our goal when we're building the budget is to build it around the board priorities, which align with our strategic plan.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Frederick. I must say, your presentation was graphically and aesthetically pleasing, but the message remains a little somber. So we're here, we're in this with you. We're going to support you, but we'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
And thank you. I wanted to say the same thing, that it's a dire, dire message. I did hear from one of our lobbyists that our neighbor to the south has put, has instituted a hiring freeze for teachers due to the budget concerns. So these are grave times, and we appreciate having you, as well as the superintendent, both being so knowledgeable about school board finance, leading us through these dangerous waters. Ms. Whitfield?
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Frederick. It's very good. I really enjoyed all your charts. I wanted to ask you two questions. The first one is about Slide 10. Looking at those numbers overall, I know it's kind of hard to tell because of the vouchers that we've had come in, but overall, the state population for students has gone down for everyone, right? It's not just us. I know some of the urbans have gone down, but it's just shrinking throughout the entire state. Is that true?
Yes, we have not received the third revenue calculation, which is where we'll see what the October enrollment was across the state. Just based on my discussions with my peer districts, Miami Dade, Orange, Hillsborough, we're all facing declining enrollment.
And then I think because of that, we're seeing a lot of our school districts are closing schools, and I was curious, do you know what it has taken in those school districts to make that decision? You know, is it a certain number of people? Is it just the financial issues? What is it that kind of makes that decision for them?
I would say with the school districts that are truly facing closing schools at this time, have been facing declining enrollment for a much longer time period than we have. We were anticipating to be flat. We have not been facing declining enrollment. We were expecting to be down about 400 students. And so we're not at the point of, to be able to say that there are certain areas where there just are not, there isn't the number of students in order to fill up those schools. When you're looking at Broward County, if that's the county that you're speaking about, they have growth in certain areas, and then they have other areas where the schools have been been completely depleted. And so, they're just trying to rearrange the students to get them to where they can provide them, you know, high-quality education and programs. And our schools are not at the point that I would say that Broward is facing, because they've been facing declining enrollment for a much longer period of time than we have.
The state overall is still growing, though, isn't it? People moving here?
Yes, there is. The net migration is, it's a hundred percent of the net migration is into the state. The school age students are going to be growing. They're just growing at a slower rate. But you also have to look at the county you're in as well. And so, our county does have a larger senior population. We're still not, Martin County is higher than Palm Beach County, but we also have to look at the demographics within our county. And so, now, we are really digging in to the different sacs with each of our school to determine truly what was the reason for the decline in enrollment, so that we can make sure to provide programs, meeting the needs of the families, and make any shifts so that we can make sure we're utilizing the facilities to the best of the ability.
Thank you very much.
Before I call on Vice Chair Lane, I just want the record to reflect that Mr. Ferguson has joined us. Vice Chair Lane?
Yes, I have a statement and a question. From the data you gave us, I noticed that the state of Florida is forty-sixth in the nation in per-student spending. Florida is behind West Virginia, Kentucky, and Louisiana in per-student spending. And I want to point out that an investment in education is a worthwhile investment. You cannot be competitive in the global environment without a well-educated workforce. So, that's my statement, and here's my question. What's the methodology that you use to calculate the appropriate amount of reserves that you feel we should maintain?
For which, is that in regards to the fund balance slide, or?
The fund balance slide.
Or just in general?
And in general.
So, we align with the Government Finance Officers Association. So, when you're looking at reserves, you want to make sure that you have enough to be responsive if there is a significant decline in your revenue. So, there are certain general rules, which are two months of expenditures, and we also look at it as a percentage of revenue, but that's why I felt like it was important to equate it to payroll, to show that our payroll for just one payroll is eighty million dollars to understand by having, you know, a hundred and sixty million dollars, that's only enough to cover our payroll for one monthly period.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes, it is just very grim right now, and I just know that we've been able to make it with Superintendent Burke in this slot, you're in this slot now. But we've got to be real clear to everybody. We've, as far as I can remember, we've never had to lay anybody off. That's a big deal and a big question. I mean, when you look at the chart, most of the money is not in this building, it's out in our school centers. And so, we've got to figure out all of the pieces of the puzzle early. I know Broward is already doing a hiring freeze, and sometimes travel is cut and all those things, but that's not gonna make up the big money that we're talking about based on where we are now. So, can we have a little discussion about how do you see us really tackling this without going through a RIF process and really laying people off? We've been able to kind of make it do with a lot of different actions, as you've mentioned in your slides, but I don't know, this seems to be a lot different this time. So, can you tell me, how are we gonna make it, based on what we need to do, that we don't get to the bottom of the barrel where we have to lay people off?
We were somewhat fortunate that during the pandemic, we did have an increase in vacancies. And so, why, when we made the adjustments this current year, aligning the staffing at the school sites, we had more than enough vacancies to absorb that reduction in positions. And then, we also have to keep in mind, as a district, we hire a thousand teachers a year, and so, I do not anticipate when we're looking at the staffing changes, the staffing changes can be absorbed through normal attrition, as well as some still remaining vacancies that we have within the budget. So, that is our goal, is to not lay off any employees.
That's very good to hear. And just thinking back on all of the other pieces of the puzzle, you know, with programs, in-house programs at schools, and those kinds of cuts.
Right now, we're not, we are working through the process. The goal is to minimize the impact as much as possible, but we, to the school sites, but we also have to align our expenditures based on the revenue that's being generated through enrollment. So, we will be making changes, but minimizing as much as we can any programmatic changes, and we'll be bringing all of those back to the board.
And actually educating the public, as well as our schools, because we're making it this year, but we don't want to sit on it without talking about it and laying it out, just like you laid it out to us today. At each point, you'll have a better handle on what you really will have to do as we move forward. We have had the ESSR funds and a lot of other things that's kept us afloat, but I don't know how we're gonna be able to make it through this the way we've done in the past. So, it's serious that we have these intermittent talks about where we are and what we're gonna have to do. So, teachers, others that are out in the school center and the community need to know, when you look at the chart, we've got to have the referendum. My goodness, it's coming, but we've got to really market that well. We can't even afford to lose anything now, or we're gonna be in big trouble. So, it's very scary right now as we work through this.
Ms. Savagero?
Thank you for the presentation and the graphics.
Well, I just have to mention, I have to give AI the credit for that, you know, so. We did, I did heavily utilize AI to do the graphics. My content, the graphics are from AI.
It's funny, because I usually have conversations with AI and graphics, and it tells me back, "I'm sorry, Virginia, I know I cannot do better than you, because I'm not a graphic designer." I swear to God, it's so funny. I'm like, eh, forget it. So, I get the information and I design it, but for this purpose, it was good. I usually expect better for what I usually do. But on slide fifteen, you said two things that caught my attention, and I really want to talk about it, redundancies. What's next? And leveraging AI. So, leveraging AI, I like that idea. So, I'd like to know more details about it. How is it that you're doing it? Because I'm thinking you're an expert, right, in numbers and all of this, and like you said, I've never seen this in all these years, or you, but AI has to be a little smarter than us. So, I'm thinking, what can we do with AI that we're, you know, that we're not already doing, so we can get another perspective, you know? And how do we save that money so we can give it to the teachers, right? Because that's my main purpose, you know? How can we grab more money that maybe we're not seeing? So, what's your plan on leveraging AI? How exactly? Because it sounds great, but I like a little more, more details.
So, we've always been, I would say, as a district, on the forefront of utilizing technology, and I can give you an example within our accounts payable department. We've used intelligent scanning for over ten years, and that's where the invoice is submitted through email. The system can read and then populate, instead of having a clerk enter the information, the system, it's being automatically done by, just through the software. So, we want to make sure that the technologies that we're using have been kept up to date, because the technology is only advanced and is advancing so quickly, you know? And I want to make sure that we are leveraging everything that we could be, you know? So, we've been very proactive in the past, going back and looking at what we have utilized, because that is AI technology, that we are using the most advanced technology to see if we can create any more efficiencies within our operations. So, that was mainly what I was thinking with leveraging AI, what I was talking about.
Well, I like to see you maybe ask, what is it that we're not doing? How can we do better? I mean, have real conversations and ask AI to act like a CFO, you know, some, we have to push it. But when you said invoice, this is wonderful, but you see, when it comes to invoicing, you can have the best invoice, but if on the other side, you know, it's not getting paid, or it's getting paid, or we're, I don't know, just there's some discrepancies with some contracts and invoicing and all of that, so it's not just invoicing, right? I mean, it's also what we're paying, but I just want more AI when it comes to, you know, the redundancies and saving money, not for the savings side, but, you know, how do we actually find some money for teachers? That would be amazing. But, you know, maybe ask, you know, let's do some research on what AI technology it's out there to review big budgets, right? Or analyze it, or, you know, just have that perspective that, and I know, because as a designer, when I used to design, I needed another perspective, because when you're so into something, you lose track of certain things. Maybe it's small, right? But I mean, enough to make a difference, so that we have AI, it's free, might as well use it. Thank you.
Ms. Branch?
I just want to commend Mr. Burke and Mrs. Frederick on their excellent forward-thinking strategy to bring our budget in line with our resources for both FY twenty-six and twenty-seven. We're very fortunate to not have to close any schools, like other districts have had to do. And so, I want to thank you and Mr. Burke for your great leadership and knowledge on this. People don't understand unless you're here talking about it. I don't want an AI person talking about it. I want you talking about it. And I'm sure AI can help in some way, but as you know, I'm a purse people person, so I appreciate your, presentation was fantastic, and I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Well, that's a very nice way to wrap us up, so I'm now going to turn the meeting back over to the superintendent.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Frederick. And I know we'll be back again as we work through this process for the next roughly ten months. At this point, I'm gonna invite up Mr. Keith Oswald, our Chief of Student Safety, or Student Health and Wellness, rather, and he's gonna be joined by Ms. Valerie Mieres, our Director of Student Athletics, Ms. Patricia Morales, our Deputy General Counsel, and Ms. Lisa Carmona, Assistant General Counsel. Mr. Oswald's got four policies, provides, he's gonna workshop and some updates. A lot of these changes are tied to statutory changes that took place last session. So, welcome, Mr. Oswald.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Appreciate that, and good afternoon, board members. This is a non-AI-approved presentation, but, so, next time, though, just get ready. I'm just telling you. Yes, we do have four policies, three of which are driven, as Mr. Burke said, by legislative changes. Five-point-six-one-five is actually a repeal due to a pilot program that no longer exists. We'll start first with five-point-six-oh eligibility for participation in K-12 extracurricular activities. This has mainly to do with really the first bullet, our non-traditional student, as it relates to athletics, in particular, our private school students, charter school students, FLVS students, and home education, in which this new legislation allows all but charter school students to participate in high school athletics, or FHSAA, in any school in the county of which they reside, and for charter would be the zone school, if that particular school does not offer that athletic sport. And then, at that other school, they would also have to meet eligibility requirements as any other student. In addition, good cause exemption has been defined for this policy, and for us here in the district, we define that as any student's been reassigned by the region or the district. Also, this policy has language in there to, for denial of participation shall not violate any protected classes as by state law. And then, lines one ninety-four, two-ten, all two-four, Senate Bill two forty-eight, HP four forty-three, again, what really drove these policy changes, again, as I just mentioned, regarding participation in high school athletics, so that further defines, is defined in this policy. And any of our non-traditional students are also subject to any district's code of conduct and athletic participation, with GPA as it were required for any of our own students. So, that's a summary of five-point-six-oh. Five-point-six-one also has to do with athletics as a require, eligibility requirements, and again, driven by the new requirement that takes place for our next school year regarding student athletes being, have to have an EKG screening or ECG screening. So, we just received notification from FHSAA that this will be phased in with incoming freshmen and any student in tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade who has never participated in high school athletics. Currently, Ms. Mieres and I, myself, have been working with a number of partners to work on accomplishing this. There's some other nuances in the statute regarding costs, also exemption from this. So, what we did with this policy is actually put in any required state health screening, so if any other screenings does come, do come into play, this policy would still be valid and not have to come back for a change. Policy five-point-six-one-five is a repeal. This is a pilot program that existed in the past with FHSAA. We know, we haven't done this in years, so this policy would be repealed if supported. And then, last is a health-related policy, five-point-three-two-four, students with life-threatening health conditions, another statute change requiring any students with anaphylaxis or some kind of severe allergy, to make sure that we provide training for staff during the school day, as well as after-school hours through the school nurse, and that that staff would have access to the emergency action plans available to them. In addition to that, it also requires an online training that the Department of Education has released that talks about the signs, symptoms, and how to address anaphylaxis should it And that's a summary of those policies. We will bring this back for development on January twenty-first and adoption March fourth, but we will also turn back over to Mr. Burke for questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald.
Board members, do we have, anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Ms. Whitfield. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll give everybody a minute to get over to this special meeting. Okay, I will now call the special meeting to order at three-thirty-seven PM. The record should reflect that we still have a quorum with all seven board members present. Okay, board members, we have four sets of minutes. I will take a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Ms. Whitfield. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do not have any items to add for good cause. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, board members, we have two items pulled, P-two and POL dash COO-three. Anybody else want to pull any items? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. A motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any disclosures or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that's gonna bring us to superintendent and board member comments.
Thank you. Just one comment this evening. Arts education in our school districts continue to thrive, and that was evident with our recent Winter Art Dazzle exhibition here in the district headquarters. If you had a chance to walk around the building a little bit, you saw artwork displayed from thirty schools across Palm Beach County, and that exhibition will run through this Friday, December twelfth. So, I just want to congratulate all of our student artists here. You can see, they've got a lot of impressive work. And, you know, just a reminder that we've been able to protect the fine arts in Palm Beach County schools, thanks to a voter-approved referendum that was approved in twenty-twenty-two by seventy-four percent of voters, and that'll be back on the ballot November twenty-twenty-six. That concludes my comments. Chair Bro, thank you.
Thank you. And so, board members, I'll be speaking about this at the next meeting, but just to make everyone aware who's in the room today, and anyone who may be listening, I am placing what I call our license-to-learn cards outside. These are the licenses that support our education foundation. When you get a license, education, support education license plate, twenty dollars from your license plate goes directly to our education foundation. Teachers, those of you that are shopping at the Red Apple Supply Store, where you're not paying for your school supplies, this is how we do it. So, I'll be speaking a lot more about this. We're going to keep them out in the lobby as long as we possibly can, hopefully driving up the number of sales for these license plates, because it's a small way that we can all participate in helping all participate in helping support our teachers and our education system. And so with that, Ms. Savayeto, do you have any comments tonight?
Shockingly, I will skip my comments until next meeting.
Ms. Whitfield. Ms. Branch?
I mighter brief. I just want to thank, last Friday was the 42nd Annual Adult and Education Awards Luncheon, and once again, Fred Bartsch and his team did a great job. Just a few of their accomplishments in 2425 year where they served over 20,000 adult ed students, the highest enrollment ever. They also increased career and technical education enrollment in apprentice trade programs from 258 in 2024 to 339 in 2025, which is a 31% increase. I'm very happy about this increase. Career and technical education and programs are very important, and I look forward to another increase in enrollment next year. They began the first-ever career dual enrollment course in welding at West Tech in partnership with Palm Beach State College. I'm very proud of our adult education. Keep up the great work. And last, but certainly not least, big congratulations to West Boca High Football Team for advancing again to the 6A State Playoff Championship Game against West Broward this Friday, December 12th, at 12:30 at the FIU Stadium. They, everybody knows, they won the state championship last year, so I hope they would do it again this year. Go Bulls! Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Just a few. And first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Reginald Mayes, the Principal at Palm Beach Central High School, for his outstanding work in having a parade to salute our servicemen and women, and as well as our first responders. Mr. Burke, you were there in that parade. It happens every year. We should continue to thank our service providers, our servicemen and women and families. It was a lovely parade. We all had a great time. And I was out at Glades Central for the honor roll. I can tell you, there were so many boys in the honor roll this year, but a lot of girls too. But it was packed, the whole auditorium was packed for the honor roll, telling our students academics mean everything and do your best every single day. And yes, Dr. Joaquim Garcia High School wins FHSAA Florida Invitational Tournament, fit football champions for the state of Florida. Go, go, Dr. Joaquim Garcia High School! Go Bulldogs! You did it, first in the state, brand-new school making a name for themselves. And on Monday, it was a bittersweet time for me. Erica Whitfield was there, she's now the new CJC representative for this board. But I had been serving with the CJC since 2019, and I've been on the executive committee with them for the last five years. And they celebrated me as I'm rolling off of that board with flowers, plaque, and a beautiful gift, and just working with Palm Beach County Criminal Justice Commission, making sure there's equity for all people as it relates to criminal justice means everything. And on Monday night, I was out at Royal Palm Beach Village for the Education Advisory Board. I do this every month, and look at all those beautiful children from Western Academy. They were singing and singing and singing. And Western Academy is an outstanding charter school, district public charter school, A-rated in the state. They're great, and we celebrated them. And we celebrate our schools and the Village of Royal Palm Beach each month, and it was my pleasure to be there. And just on yesterday, I was at the Glades Career Read and this roundtable we meet every month as school board member for District 6. We had our roundtable. We had pretty close to about 50 people, people on the screen, our virtual family as people in the audience. And we keep the Glades region informed about everything. Mr. Burke, thank you so much, and your team for being with us every single month, making it happen. But we celebrated the holidays with a lot of festive treats. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope everyone had an enjoyable Thanksgiving with their family and loved ones. I certainly did, and happy to say I didn't overeat while doing it. As to district-related events, I attended the Atlantic High School football game against MacArthur High School from Broward County on November 21st. Atlantic trailed 17-0 at half, and despite an impressive rally, they came up a little bit short, losing to MacArthur 17-16. And so while that outcome is not what we on Team Palm Beach would like, would like, I congratulate the team on their strong year, and more importantly, for winning in the bigger game, the game of life. The Atlantic football team's performance against MacArthur is a win in the game of life in my book from the standpoint that they didn't quit, and they competed until the end. Far too often, people when faced with challenges shrink and give up, and in doing so, they miss out on the positive experience, euphoria, if you will, that one only gets when they put their best foot forward in addressing challenges that they can hope to overcome. In life, things often don't go our way. So what? Most obstacles can and are overcome through resolve of mind and perseverance. Kudos to the Atlantic football team for their perseverance on November 21st. I have no doubt you'll leverage this so-called loss that you experienced against MacArthur to create multiple opportunities for your individual and team's success throughout the game of life. Be well, young men. To that point, I also want to congratulate West Boca for being a back-to-back finalist. I echo a board member Branch's Go Bull sentiment. It's an excellent program, great principal, great coach, just a great team. Young men, we wish you the best. Last week, I traveled to Tampa to attend the Florida School Board Association Annual Conference. Congratulations to the superintendent and Chair Brill on being recognized for their work in their respective roles. I had the distinct honor of introducing the keynote speaker of the FSBA conference, Dr. James H. Johnson, Jr. Dr. James provided an informative speech on the demographic changes here in Florida and across the country. The speech affirmed, I believe, that everyone involved in public education must exhibit a truer commitment to sustaining and improving our public education systems so that the prospects for future and continuous success of our most precious commodity, our students, are enhanced. Everyone should take a kids-first approach and not a me-first approach, as the latter is what largely has led to the current attempt to disassemble the public education system of this state and country. Whether elected by voters of this county, appointed by the school ward, hired by the superintendent or his staff, every member of Team Palm Beach has been gifted with the privilege of participating in public education in this county. Comport yourself as such. Stepping down from my soapbox to return to FSBA, I also was afforded the chance to address the general body on an issue that I think will streamline parts of the election process of the FSBA in the immediate future. The Greater Consortium of Florida School Boards also met at the FSBA conference. I was appointed by the current chair in months past to oversee the recently-created Emergency Management Disaster Recovery Subcommittee. This Subcommittee is working with our Greater Consortium of Florida School Board lobbyists to garner support in the state legislature for the creation of a disaster relief trust fund as a means of helping to mitigate the impending void that is likely to grow as the federal government moves away from utilizing FEMA. Upon returning to Palm Beach County, I was able to stop by the AFL-CIO Legislative Breakfast on last Saturday and the Economic Council's Holiday Event on Monday. Yesterday, I hosted a joint town hall with Riviera Beach Mayor Doug Lawson regarding prospective educational programming the residents of Riviera Beach would like to see at the high school that we're scheduled to open in August of 2030 in Riviera Beach. Residents of Riviera Beach who have not received the survey that has been sent out to all Riviera Beach residents last week can email me at edwin@ferguson.pfrguson, again, that's edwin@ferguson.pfrguson, at palmbeachschools.org to obtain a copy of the survey. I also want to thank Dr. Geraldine Johnson and Mr. Fred Bartsch for helping me to conduct such an informative and interactive dialogue with 40-plus attendees. This Saturday's Project Uplift event will be hosted by the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated in the city of Pahokee. We'll be meeting at 171 North Lake Avenue at 8:00 AM, which is right at the foot of Lake Okeechobee. This is our second time bringing Project Uplift to Pahokee, and if it's anything like last year's event, it'll be a great success. If you have any questions, please refer to contact me at (561) 840-1846, or email me at projectuplift, P-R-O-J-E-C-T-U-P-L-I-F-T-P-B-C at gmail.com. That's it for today, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lane?
I'm going to reserve my comments until next week's regular board meeting, other than also to congratulate Chair Karen Brill on winning the Consortium of Florida Education Foundation Star School Board Member Award, and our own Superintendent Mike Burke on winning the Consortium of Florida Education Foundation's Star Superintendent Award at this year's FSBA 80th Annual Conference. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, award-winning Madam Chair.
Thank you. So that's going to bring us, Mr. Superintendent, to proclamations.
Yes, COM 1, I recommend the board proclaim January 2026 as National Mentoring Month.
Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Ms. Whitfield. I understand that Ms. Andrews would like to read the proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation, National Mentoring Month, January 2026. Whereas, National Mentoring Month is an annual campaign to recruit quality mentors to provide additional networks of support for young people. And whereas, the school district of Palm Beach County recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to success in their education, career, and well-being. And whereas, local mentoring programs make our state and communities stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide valuable support networks. And whereas, mentors can help young people explore careers and build skills to achieve improved lifetime economic outcomes through activities like helping them to set career goals, write a resume, practice for an interview, connecting them to opportunities, and more. And whereas, research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including truancy and absenteeism, scholastic efficacy, and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support. And whereas, quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and relationship growth for young people. And whereas, with a mentor, at-risk youth are more likely to enroll in college, less likely to start using drugs, and more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. And whereas, National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Palm Beach County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and school board of Palm Beach County do hereby proclaim January 2026 as National Mentoring Month, done this 10th day of December 2025 in West Palm Beach, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. COM 2, I recommend the board proclaim January 2026 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month.
Motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Savayeto. I'm going to read this proclamation, but I am going to start off by telling my colleagues that the superintendent has shared with me that the human trafficking flyers are now being distributed and placed in private areas in our schools and in our district offices. So this is the proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, January 2026. Whereas, human trafficking in any form is an egregious abuse of power and a horrific crime that threatens the safety, health, and dignity of millions of people worldwide. And whereas, although women and girls are the primary victims of human trafficking, victims, survivors, come from every background, race, gender, sexual orientation, and economic status. And whereas, young people are especially vulnerable to trafficking and exploitation but face many barriers in reporting what has happened to them due to the isolating nature of these crimes, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas, survivors should receive all available support on their road to recovery, and the public must listen to their experiences in order to better detect trafficking crimes, bring perpetrators to justice, and improve prevention efforts. And whereas, expanding community knowledge and availability of local resources and services for those affected by these crimes can help restore freedom and dignity to survivors. Efforts to fight human trafficking must be tied to broader initiatives to advance equity and justice throughout society. And whereas, the school district partners with all relevant Palm Beach County agencies to support students and provide educational programs to prevent trafficking, assisting in maintaining the rights of students and families who may be affected. And whereas, the school district collaborates with the Florida Department of Education to ensure community awareness of available supports, resources, to combat trafficking. And whereas, all communities must work to prevent human trafficking before it occurs by promoting safe, healthy, and supportive environments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and school board of Palm Beach County do hereby proclaim January 2026 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, and pledges to fight against injustice to ensure dignity and freedom for everyone, done this 10th day of December 2025 in West Palm Beach, Florida. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
COM 3, I recommend the board proclaim January 27th, 2026 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day.
Motion by Vice Chair Lane, second by Ms. Andrews. I'm going to read this proclamation, but just preface it with a quick thank you to the superintendent and staff, because this is the first time I can remember that we're doing proclamations in advance of the actual date and month. So congratulations on getting us on track. So proclamation for International Holocaust Remembrance Day, January 27, 2026. Whereas, International Holocaust Remembrance Day marks the 80th anniversary of the liberation of the Auschwitz concentration camp. And whereas, just days earlier, the Schutzstaffel, commonly known as the SS, forced nearly 60,000 prisoners to evacuate the concentration camp and embark on the infamous death marches, which took thousands of innocent lives. And whereas, on November 1st, 2005, the United Nations General Assembly passed a resolution to designate January 27 as an international day of commemoration in memory of Holocaust victims, the day upon which the world will remember the Holocaust and its victims each year. And whereas, on this anniversary, the school district of Palm Beach County must commit itself to combating the global rise in antisemitism, and should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust, and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas, the school district of Palm Beach County should actively dedicate itself to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas, the commemoration of this unprecedented event reminds us all of our solemn duty to keep alive the memory of the millions who perished during the Holocaust, and to ensure through education and mutual respect that acts of genocide shall never occur again. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and school board of Palm Beach County do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 27, 2026, as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we should work to promote human dignity and confront hate wherever and whenever and wherever it occurs, done this 10th day of December 2025 in West Palm Beach, Florida. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do not have any agenda item topic speakers tonight. That will bring us to the consent agenda. Board members, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Ms. Whitfield. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's going to bring us to new business, and the first item is a board item. So just give me one moment, please. Okay. So I recommend that the board approve the Board Member Committee Liaison and alternate for the American Association of Caregiving Youth. Due to an unavoidable scheduling conflict impacting our currently-appointed school board representative, we are opening the floor for nominations for a new board representative to the American Association of Caregiving Youth. I will tell you that I am currently serving as the alternate. If this board so desires, I'd be happy to step into the role as our appointee, but I would need a motion for that, and then we're going to need a motion for the alternate. Motion by- Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Ms. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so I will be the representative. We now need a motion for an alternate. I will nominate Ms. Andrews. Would you be willing? I plan to be there, so, one way or another. I know you have served, I believe, in the past.
And certainly I have, and I'd love to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much. So is there a second to my motion or to my nomination? Okay. So now we're going to vote? Any other discussion? Anybody else want to step up? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so Ms. Andrews is going to be my alternate. So, Mr. Superintendent, that brings us to P2. Oh, I'm sorry. I am moving way too quickly because we all have such busy schedules. We're going to go back now to the main motion, which is now on the floor. So, motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, P2, I recommend that the school board approve the job description as submitted.
Motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Policy C003, I recommend the board approve Development of Proposed Revised Policy 7.22 Construction Change Orders.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Ms. Whitfield. Okay, for a discussion, I actually pulled this item. So as you will recall, I had some concerns about this policy when we brought it up in the workshop, and so I've done a lot of research, and I'm not going to bore you with all of it, but I think it's important that I share with you what I discovered and why I'm not supporting the policy changes as they're written. So what I learned is construction change orders are one of the most common sources of cost overruns and audit findings in Florida school districts, which I conferred, I confirmed with Ms. Michael when I met with her earlier. School districts statewide, and this is factual when I name them, including Miami Dade, Broward, Hillsborough, and Orange, have faced major audit criticisms when boards delegate too much authority. What I discovered in my research is that no school district in Florida gives staff authority for more than $100,000. And only one other school district other than us, which is Broward, gives staff up to $100,000 to automatically approve change orders. This policy that we're approving gives staff up to $200,000 authority. Statewide standards and recommendations from OPAGA, which is the Office of Program Analysis and Government Accountability, the Auditor General's Construction Audit Guidelines, Association of School Business Officials, and the Council of Great City Schools, all emphasize lower and more conservative approval thresholds. Contractors are not necessarily acting maliciously, but when thresholds rise, bidding strategies can change. Contractors may lower bids upfront, knowing they can recover revenue through change orders. They may submit more unforeseen condition claims, and they may take advantage of being midway through construction when the district has limited options. When approval authority is held by a smaller number of staff, it reduces the checks and balances. It also weakens the construction oversight review committee's purpose. So in summary, raising these dollar thresholds reduces board oversight at the exact point where projects are most vulnerable to cost overruns. Multiple staff-approved change orders can quietly accumulate, even if we monitor them, before the board really sees a problem, and early visibility is essential. Transparency suffers. Large change orders approved at the staff level mean that the public and Cork lose their ability to monitor emerging issues. This shift does not align with construction best practices used by other major Florida districts, which keep more conservative approval limits limp to protect taxpayers. Contractors respond to the policy. Higher thresholds invite low bid, high change order strategies that increase district costs, and the public trust is at stake. Our community expects strong, visible oversight when we are spending large capital dollars. So I support efficiency and recognize that not every minor change should require board action, but these proposed thresholds do not reflect the level of due diligence our community expects. We can streamline processes without compromising oversight, transparency, or fiscal responsibility. And while some say these approval limits are not excessive, I disagree, and obviously those organizations that monitor construction also disagree. And so I can't support raising the approval limits to this degree. The area that I'm really most concerned about, I'm not really concerned about the superintendent's authority, because there are districts, as I discussed with the superintendent, that allow the superintendent to have unlimited authority up to the cost of the project. Where I'm very concerned is giving staff, when the maximum around the state in best practices is 100,000, we're giving them up to double that. And I'm really concerned in considering what's going on in the state, you know, with the audits, with DOGE, that we are just, you know, putting forward something that really is not going to be acceptable. So I haven't put together a motion. A welcome conversation. The superintendent is willing to hear everybody here, because I think it's important that we take a look at this a little bit closer. So I'm opening up the floor. I see we have a lot of people that want to speak. Mr. Burke, do you want to go first?
I'd appreciate that. I'd just like to provide a little context and first say that we remain committed to transparency and accountability. The landscape with change orders is changing quickly, because, and not all the districts have had a chance to get to their policies, but we had a new state law take effect July 1 that put a time limit on the approval of change orders of 35 days. So that's prompted some of these changes. We worked with an outside consultant, Cara Riggs in Ingram, that's a construction management auditor, and we were working to strike a balance that would allow us to be efficient and comply with the law and still maintain accountability. We looked at our change orders for last year, and we looked through it to the lens of this proposed policy, to see how many change orders would exceed, you know, currently we have $100,000 of authority at my level. Under this policy, that would increase to 200,000. So we went and reviewing our history for the past 12 months, we found that there would have been eight change orders between 100 and 200,000 that I would have theoretically been able to have approved. And part of this policy calls for those change orders. While they're being approved, so we can be timely, they would still come back to both Cork and the school board after the fact for ratification, so that at least, you know, the board is knowledgeable and you can see what we're doing. So it's not in the dark, you know? We would keep it in the sunshine. The other thing I'll just mention is, you know, we've had this $100,000 level for the superintendent in place for over a decade. And over that same decade, the cost of construction has risen dramatically. So for me to go, you know, as I recommend going from 100,000 to 200,000, I don't feel like that's a really high leap. I feel like that's kind of recognizes that the costs of these projects have all gone up. And the other thing I want to make sure that we still remain well-positioned is that we have an ambitious capital plan. You know, thankfully, we have the benefit of our half sales tax, which has its own independent oversight committee, but we have over $2 billion worth of work to do in the next 10 years. And I want to make sure that we remain efficient and nimble in being able to get this work done in a timely manner. So that's kind of my justification for the recommendation. I'm comfortable with this recommendation, and I would be happy to, you know, hear from the board and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So I'm going to move on to the board in just a moment, but I just want to express that I completely trust our superintendent, but I do have to look at OPAGA. I have to look at the Council of Great City Schools. I have to look at best practices.
The chair pointed the board. There's been no motion seconding on the floor. This is all improper procedure.
This is, I'm going to be calling on the other people, and remember, you gave me the authority when you decided to change the policy for the board meetings.
No, I didn't. No, this is not a...
So I am allowed a second, excuse me. But I am the chair, and I'm going to continue. So I just want to say...
This is a matter of Robert's rules, respectfully, Madam Chair. I'm just saying, I didn't hear, did we, Madam Attorney, did we second the motion? And if so, are we in discussion? Because I don't think that we got that far.
It's my understanding that we're in discussion right now, currently.
Okay, so just to follow up, I think that we do need to look, we did have a, first, we had a, yes, we had a motion, we had a second, and this is discussion. So I just want to say that while I trust the superintendent, I do look at best practices around the state, and I am just not comfortable with the rest, with knowing, I mean, I wasn't going to bring it up, but they're recommending up to 50,000 for staff approvals. I do understand the change in the law about change orders and the 35 days, but we meet frequently enough, and where there's a will, there's a way for us to approve it. But I think in this environment that we're in, and I want to hear from my colleagues, I'm fine if you want to accept it the way it is, I just won't support it, but I want you to understand why I have grave concerns about moving this direction. And so with that, I'll go to you, Mr. Ferguson.
So this is something I thought we already discussed in regard to the superintendent's reason for wanting to go to 200,000. However, having heard what you said, I think you raised a good point in terms of what is the current value of $100,000? So if this policy has not been changed since 2015, I did a quick Google search, and it says that the present value of $100,000 in 2015 is somewhere between 136,700 and 137,000, which is roughly a 36.7 increase due to an average annual inflation of roughly 3.17%. So just for the effective use of the money, it definitely needs to go up. If you say that if there's going to be a, I guess, a motion put on the floor to amend the current motion on the floor for, say, at 136,700 to 137, for example, I'm not going to do it. But if you did that, I could kind of understand that point. But to say let's just stay at $100,000, again, for all the reasons the superintendent has already stated, I don't think that's prudent. As normal, we tend to make changes to our policies before the greater majority of the 66 other counties and the state do. So just to say because no one else has done it, we shouldn't do it, I'm not there. But again, just as a point of information for the group, according to an online search I just did, 100K in 2015 is equal to 136,700 to 137,000 in 2025, which is basically a 3.17% increase per annum over that 10-year cycle. So bear that.
Thank you, Ms. Whitfield.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you brought this up. I definitely am happy to talk about it. I think one thing that's really important to note here is that we are hearing from our community about the issues getting paid. This has been a big problem within people wanting to work or not work for the school district. And I think that, as I've stated before, anything that we can do to facilitate people in our community being able to work with the school district, and it is just very difficult to work with anyone who has a board, because going through us takes a lot of time. So I'm very supportive of this. I think this is a really important step that we can take. I ask our CEO to please bring us any opportunities that we can have to be able to both watch the money, but also make sure that we're facilitating engagement with the community. And so I think this is really important. Also, as Mr. Ferguson said, I think it's probably about time this happened, because we are at a place where these projects are going up in price, these amounts of money that we've given and delegated to the superintendent and staff to approve are getting to be really just a tiny percentage of the budget and of the costs that we're experiencing in our community. So I am supportive of this policy. I think it is a good thing. I think it's well within the restrictions that we need to be to be able to make sure that we're being good stewards of the money, which I think is very important, but I do support it in its current status. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
And I certainly support the policy, and I did hear the superintendent clearly, and I heard the staff the last time we were here. And, Mr. Ferguson, yes, the money is not the same today as it was before, but Palm Beach County has been outstanding as it relates to managing our finances, building schools, and moving this district in the best direction possible. I have fully confidence in the people who actually work with our operations department, Mr. Sanchez, Cork, and all of our oversight committees. We have more than most people. Lots of districts just want to do it, but we put our money where our mouth is. Long time ago in Palm Beach County, by having a lot of oversight, and we have not been in trouble. Some districts have been in trouble. We have not in managing our money. And we're in crisis stages right now as it relates to money. But we also know we have a lot of work to do for our children in building schools and getting the processes in place. And yes, Ms. Whitfield, we have to pay people, and we are Palm Beach County, and when we ask people to do great work, we want to compensate them. So I don't want to go back into all of the things that I heard today, but I'm certainly in favor of this, and I appreciate, Mr. Burke, the finance team, operations, for taking care of the money here in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
There's just two more points I want to make sure the board's aware of that I feel are safeguards with this policy. No change order can exceed the budget amount for the project. That can't happen, you know, under my authority, anyone else's. Also, no change order can delay the completion of the project. So those type of significant changes would have to come to the board. So hopefully that gives you a little more reassurance. Thank you.
Before I call on Ms. Branch, was there going to be a methodology where you will keep Cork apprised of any, of a list of the change orders for a particular project so that they will be advised of whether it goes beyond the scope of the project that was approved? Like, is there going to be a monitoring system?
That was my question.
Yes, I'm going to ask our chief operating officer, Mr. Sanchez, to speak to that.
Yes, we will continue to provide Cork with all the reports that they're looking for to make sure that they're aware of every change order and any contingency use, so they'll be aware of it.
And just as a follow-up, are you, would you please also monitor whether we start getting lower bids and then more change orders from particular companies that work with us?
Absolutely. And we use CM@Risk primarily, so that doesn't really happen as much on our projects as it would hard bid contracts, so it's a little bit different, the way we do business.
Thank you. So that's going to bring us to Ms. Branch.
That was kind of my question, was maybe we could have a report to show what's proved above 100,000 and description and how much it was so that, you know, he could feel better about it.
That's our intent.
Okay, so I don't see any other discussion, so all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Are you in favor or opposed, Ms. Savayeto?
I was supporting you. I mean, I wanted to vote like you.
Okay, so motion carries. Five in favor, two opposed, being Ms. Savayeto and Ms. Brill. And that now brings us, I believe, to the end of our agenda. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Ms. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we're out before 5 o'clock.